And I'll call the meeting to order at 4:31. And the first item on the agenda is to accept the agenda or make any amendments before we accept the amendments to make to the agenda. And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. We're posted.
What, correct? All right, so we've got Craig then Ruth. All in favor, please raise your hand. If any are opposed, please raise your hand, seeing none that motion carries and we'll move on to approving the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes for this meeting. So the first is to approve the minutes of March 9th. And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And if there are no changes to the March 9th minutes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll make a motion to approve. And all in favor, please raise your hand. And if any are opposed, raise your hand. And are you opposed Patricia?
Oh, no. No, I thought you said.
So the motion carries unanimously. And now we'll move to the minutes of March 16th. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And does anyone have any amendments to make to those minutes?
I have a question on that. It was, there was an earlier set of minutes and then there was a later set of minutes. And I, there was a difference between the two of them, I guess, because I don't, I was wondering what the difference was.
I don't know, because I only reviewed the second copy. So Patricia, is there, was it just a scrivener's error?
The second copy had a expression of gratitude to the three people that took notes at the focus group. The first one did not. So I deleted that one and put the one in with the expression of gratitude to Athanade Ballot, Darlene Brady, and Melissa Cherniski. That's the difference.
Okay, any amendments to those minutes? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
And so we'll do Barbara then Glenn. And all in favor, please raise your hand. And if any are opposed, raise your hand. Seeing none that.
Who, who, that was Joe and who for the motion?
I did Glenn and Barbara for that one.
And the first was Connie and Craig.
Yeah.
I think it was Ruth and.
We all did it.
Okay. Joe and Craig.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And the record can reflect that there are no members of the public here with us this afternoon. So we're going to move directly into old business. And the first item under old business is focus groups. So last Friday, the residents' focus group convened. There were only two people there, although I thought that maybe as many as six were going to attend. In the end, just two showed up. I sent the notes around that Melissa Cherniski prepared. I just want to maybe go out of my comfort zone here to speak for a minute or two about my feelings about that focus group, because I've been thinking about it a lot, like over the weekend and since the group itself. And I think that like, I mean, it was upbeat, it was congenial. But like even, you know, despite our silver lining question at the end, I just really left with a feeling of grief and loss. Like, like a lot. And, you know, I, there was a lot of anxiety, a lot of isolation, you know, just two people. You know, and these are two people who, consistent with our survey, did not experience a financial impact at all. But stories that they shared of, you know, a grandparent and having a baby. And not being able to hug the baby. And, you know, just thinking about that time that really can never be repaired. You know, you can never replace that beginning time of an infant being held by people other than its parents. And, you know, like, I mean, the grief on the grandparents' side was like really palpable and so was just this idea that, you know, for an infant, the socialization opportunity that is lost is, could have a really profound impact. And then, you know, for the, you know, another parenting, excuse me, example, was this dad who's got two kids, one daughter who was fairly, you know, was maybe four before COVID, and a daughter that really was a toddler all through COVID. And this toddler not having any idea of like, you know, not, in not having any inclination to hug anyone, not, you know, feeling just blown away by being in a store because they weren't in a store and it was like overwhelming to, you know, like, what is this place? You know, the, the lack of socialization that happened from not going out in the world, you know, during those really critical years was, I don't know. I mean, it just, it made me think a lot about, you know, what we heard in this social, in this focus group, which was that, you know, the damage wasn't necessarily financial, but it was still really, really profound. And both people on the focus group expressed the desire for the community to come together for there to be kind of like a healing and a relearning, if you will, of how to be together. And I just, I don't know. So I wanted to share that with you because I wasn't sure if it came across in the notes, but it definitely has made me think a lot over the last week.
So putting that into perspective as to how that would translate to ARPA dollars? Any ideas? Park and Rec ARPA dollars to create community cohesion or?
Even these two people had a lot of ideas. You know, the thing is that you need people to carry out the ideas. And so, I mean, my, my initial thought is that in addition to offering to nonprofits, businesses, people, the opportunity to be repaired for their damages, that there might be an opportunity to apply for programs that would start to do some of this healing. And, and that would be, you know, to me, I mean, the obvious is mental health, social services, but it might be more than that. We might want to look broader like than that to see if, you know, organizations like our library, like, you know, the Lions Club, like somebody down the street who just has the talent to do it, wants to put a proposal together to run a program that would help to bring people together again.
Don't you think in our community, we already have systems in place for that? I'm thinking instead of inventing something, can't we just search out the people who are already here, already in place to do some of this?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect those would be our applicants. But I'm just saying, like, for the nonprofits, for example, or the social services.
Well, I think that's where it comes from. Yeah. I, I don't see how, you know, I think the Greenwood's group and, and social services, I think that's where it's got to stem from, helping, I think, mental health is, that's the big issue. And, and I think that's why it was so important that we hear from those people. And I think that's where it's got to come from. And then, you know, this group can recommend, but it's got to come from there.
Even like one of these focus group participants said, you know, like, what if, I mean, if there were a community center or if there was a place where like people could get together for crafting, you know, I mean, that's not going to be.
But this is outside our realms.
I agree. Yeah. You would fund a park and rec to do that or something.
Well, I, yeah, I'm just saying, maybe what we want to do is allow people to make a proposal to do something for the community like that. Rather leave it to their, I think that's going to go well beyond what we. I mean, we already have that.
I think the, the cure for lack of socialization is socialization, right? So creating opportunities for people to get together and maybe do more so than our communities ever done in the past. So the sore thing that KCS came up with kind of fits in that, expanding park and rec programs. And maybe it's some, you know, events in the coming year or two, particularly for children, since that's really where the socialization, that is where the socialization deficit is. So that's. I, I, like, I'm not sure, I mean, obviously there are going to be some people that need to spend time in front of a therapist, but I don't know that with community funds, we can address that specifically other than by funding the therapist.
So, so Connie, so then what you're, what, what you're suggesting is something instead of like a therapist or anything like that, like a support group, something like that? Is that what you?
I, you know, I don't really know that at this point in the discussion, I'm suggesting anything more than just saying that, you know, it was, to me, it was so helpful to have the focus group in addition to the survey responses, because I felt like the residents were typical of what we heard in the surveys, but that the ideas came across so much more fully to, you know, as to how people really were impacted by, you know, this catastrophic event that we've all lived through, that may still rear its head again. And that was, you know, that the, I mentioned, you know, our silver lining question and that layup to people to close out of the focus group with, you know, what good came out of this? And one of the participants was like, you know, I'd like to say that this was over, but I live in fear that it's not, and I think it's going to come back. And I mean, this, this person, you know, was not, you know, I mean, was, was speaking in a way that was very frank and not like, you know, was upbeat. And at the same time, the things that he said were, you know, I was afraid I was going to die the whole time. And I, you know, for people to have lived with that kind of fear and anxiety for two years, you know, I really, I think that we ought to think about how we address that component while also, you know, the other things that we decide to prioritize.
Addressed with the recommendation you're saying.
Great. Yeah, I mean, whether, you know, I, I just, I don't know. That, that was all. I just wanted to report out on this focus group. And I don't think, Patricia, that we have Darlene's notes yet, do we?
Can you say that again, Connie?
Do we have Darlene's notes from the nonprofit group?
No, we have not gotten Darlene's notes yet. We've gotten Athanade's and Melissa's, but Darlene has not submitted hers. And I'm assuming she's really busy. So I haven't wanted to bug her about it, but maybe if we don't get them by Monday, I'll give her a call and see when we can expect them. Meanwhile, I had my one-on-one interview with the woman who owns Lori Nails today. And she was, she was a lovely woman. And she was telling me that it was her dream to open a nail salon. And she bought the salon from the previous owners on December 4th, 2019. And on March, let's say, and on March 17th, the state closed it. So she had about three months of business before the state made her close her doors. Because she was only in business for three months, she didn't qualify for any of the loan programs and the different types of programs the federal and state government offered for small businesses, because she had only been in business for three months. So she didn't get any previous help from any other organizations. Basically, to stay open until she could reopen, according to state guidelines, she wiped out her own personal savings. The, the owner of the, of the development where the salon is forgave one month rent to people who have stores or shops there, but only one month rent. So she had three full months of no business at all. And then partially, she was able to see some customers, but very few, because it had to be timed and different. So I believe that her assessment of her loss is pretty accurate. And she's pre-COVID, she was doing about $2,000 a week in manis, pedis, massages, et cetera. Then no income or little income. And now, since it's been reopened, she's doing about $2,500. So the damage was not permanent. She's, the business is going really well now. But she did have several months of income loss, not just because of COVID, but she mentioned the two storms where the power in downtown Kent was out for two weeks one time. And so all in all, she had a tough first year of business. She's a lovely woman. I think it's a, it's a business that many people in town enjoy. And so, you know, I think she would be someone who would be deserving, I don't know of how much, I'm not suggesting how much, but, but something, because she literally wiped out her savings. She told me, I have two dreams in life. One is to buy, have a nail salon. One is to buy a home. And to keep my first dream, the nail salon going, I gave up my second dream for now, because all my money that I saved to buy a house went to keeping, paying the bills while the shop wasn't open. So that's her story in a nutshell.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Did you get a manicure at the same time? Did you get one? Did you get a?
I felt so bad for her. I got a manicure, a pedicure, and a massage. And left $90 later.
Well, thank you for, for interviewing her and for the report. Pretty comprehensive. So I think that kind of keys us up to start talking about the report outline unless anyone else has any other updates.
Before we go, before we go into that, do you want me to do the one-on-one with the cause? I'm still getting kind of caught up with what transpired.
Um, I do, I guess. Wait, are you saying to report out on your one-on-one or you?
I should schedule a one-on-one with them. When I left, it was unclear whether we were doing that or trying to add to the, the retail focus group. And now it's obvious that didn't happen.
And Craig was going to do, so do you think it's helpful to continue to do? I think it's, I think it is fine to continue to do that information gathering. So yeah, Greg, Craig, I think you should do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm going to do five in general Friday.
Okay.
The doctor's still for the Friday.
And did anybody ever speak to them so they knew that the 316 wasn't happening?
No.
Okay.
I have a question here on where it says old business and then it says tracking requests for funding.
We'll do that now, because Barbara wanted to report on that.
I did.
Didn't you?
No, I was going to talk about the.
Oh, okay.
I updated this. And I apologize, because the people who are online, you have to access it in the Google Drive.
What are we talking about? Your spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I have a printed copy.
So I updated it and I actually added dollar values to people who didn't submit dollar values. And I just sort of guesstimated and threw something in there just to try to complete it out. So it's about as complete as it can be right now. I do know that the fire department is going to be submitting something additional that's going to be extensive from what I've heard, but I haven't gotten it yet.
In addition to the gym.
Yes. Yep. So after what you were saying about Lori's salon, it made me think that the Erase Grants is probably going to be a really good way to go with some, one recommendation for some of this funding.
Yeah.
That, by the way, that Erase Grant is closed.
Well, I was able.
Website.
I was able to download their application and I also downloaded their final report, which is huge. And both of these are in our.
Yeah.
Shared.
Yeah, it's closed because they gave away all money, Joe. They did it already.
Yeah.
Well, how can people apply still?
They can't.
They can't.
What we're talking about is could we use the same thing that they did to model ours after that? We're not saying that our people would apply for Erase. We would create a program just like it.
Wasn't, wasn't there a model that was sent out for the, for the nonprofits for applications?
Well, I created a draft, yes.
Yeah, so we can talk through all of those in new business and as part of the outline.
That's all I had. I just updated this.
Well, are we, are we going to discuss some of these things that are on here? Because I actually starred some things, because it wasn't really clear. I, I guess I had questions on, you know, on, I guess, where, where some of them came from. And because I did star them.
I suggest that we discuss what we, what kind of categories we want to make recommendations in before we start to talk about the merits of each of these individual requests. Because as we discussed last week, this is not by any means the universe of requests that we would anticipate if we actually made an application.
Just to clarify for you, is, is, this is a compilation of all the information that has been submitted to my office, either via email or letter, and it tells you which way I got it, who it's from, and who they're representing. And then what was the substance of their outreach? So are they looking, do they have an idea? That's what this is. It's just a compilation so that we could see all this information in one place. That's all this is.
Yeah, because, for an example, that number six for the affordable housing.
Yeah.
Which came from CAG.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, I looked at that and it's, I know we've discussed it previous meetings about disproportionate impacted communities. So that's why I looked at that and I was, is, does it, is this targeted to, to senior community here in Kent?
No, this, the things that were received through the CAG meeting, there was one monthly CAG meeting. You see how there's four items? It says received from CAG, monthly CAG. If you look at the one I printed out, you can see it easier. See how it says CAG, 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 CAG?
Yes.
So this person, three times during that CAG meeting, got up and spoke and advocated that we utilize ARPA money for these purposes. This person was actually at the CAG meeting and he got up and advocated for his business. But that's where this information came from. And it was very early on, so I didn't want to not include it. It was something, it was a suggestion to all the municipalities in the CAG council governments.
Because a request, it's like, well, what would that be for? To, to purchase land or, or just, you know, to put into?
Affordable housing development could be a lot of different things.
I think that what, I mean, I think it's, it's really helpful to have this kind of dashboard, first of all, because, you know, otherwise it's just a collection of individual documents that we have to click into each time. But for me, right now, I have been treating this almost like, I don't know, almost like a preview of what kinds of applications we might expect to get, you know, like what other people are thinking about. But it's not, you know, this is not, you know, what we're choosing among. We are not awarding any funds to any of these people, you know, nor are we, you know, are, nor would we give them priority, you know, over other like situated entities that might ask for the same type of funding.
So when, when a final report is prepared and with the recommendations, some of these things have to be clarified.
Well, some of them won't even be used. Right? I mean, we're not going to use everything.
Because there will be, and over the amount that was allotted.
Well, no, I mean, it's just a matter of our priorities and what we feel we should recommend.
Right. We may not recommend.
Right.
So I was thinking about the idea of applications at the end of this process. And I was thinking about how the process of government in Kent works. And you know, I feel like if we introduce the idea of applications now, just ad hoc, it will be a nightmare of time expenditure. And I, I don't know when the Board of Selectmen will ever be able to come to decision on those things. So as a compromise, I really liked Litchfield's idea of recommending, we, the ARPA Needs Assessment Committee recommend that you earmark $80,000 or $100,000 to small business or service providers in Kent and distribute that money in an application process. So it won't be so much like we're abdicating any sort of responsibility for making specific recommendations, which I would really like to do. I think that our purpose is to make specific recommendations, not generic ones. And maybe it will help to shorten that application process with the Board of Selectmen if we say we've earmarked, we suggest you earmark this amount and use this application to ask people to fill it out if they want some piece of that earmark. How does that strike you?
That's what we were doing. I thought that's what we discussed last week. I agree. Yep.
Oh, I thought we were talking about applications in general.
No, well, we were thinking that the application would be for, that there would be a certain amount from which applications could be made and that we should reserve, you know, or recommend to reserve, you know, a really healthy amount that we thought would adequately cover those applications. And that, that, that might be, you know, I mean, it might be applications for harm now or, you know, might even be prospective. I mean, I, there's, there's, I, we did discuss that last week, this idea that.
As you know, there was a hearing problem, so maybe I didn't catch that at all.
I'm really glad, actually, Patricia, because I had a note on, on my annotated part of the agenda that I wanted to ask you about why you thought including an application process would unnecessarily delay this and, you know, what, what you thought. And, you know, what, what you thought would be an alternative to doing that? Because I can't see a way out of having at least an application process. But I think we want to make it as streamlined and easy as possible.
Well, I have seen how difficult it is for the Board of Selectmen to make decisions. A decision could not be made, as simple as that. Food truck, it took over a year to make a thing about food trucks. So in my mind, I'm thinking the, this. Is going to be a nightmare of indecision for months on end. So if we could help that, move that along somehow, that would be great.
Because I think that, because the other thing that we discussed last week that I think everyone kind of agreed on is that we all thought it would be. Better if the applications went to Barbara.
Yes.
You know, evaluate each application. We thought the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance should put aside this reserve for the purpose of those. Of applications for this purpose and that a different person would be.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Barbara is the perfect person.
But then the, the nature of the application is such that, one, it's very short, it's two pages. It's actually one page, two sided. And by just going through it very quickly, it's very simple for them to check off how they qualify. So all the information that I would need would be right on the application when they're done and I'd put them to check in a way they go.
But what is the formal? Who has to approve it? Me, the selectman. It doesn't say it has to come?
No, because what the selectmen are going to approve is the recommendation that they set aside fifty thousand dollars to go to businesses. And the application process comes to me and I take care of it and that's the end of that.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Patricia. If it were in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, with all due respect. It would never get done.
That's right.
So.
Yeah.
Because that would be committee. It would be, I mean, it's awful. And so I think the, that the root of going with Barbara is what makes the most sense and.
Yeah. Because Barbara is the one most knowledgeable about the federal regulations. She's efficient and speedy, so if we could get the earmark approved. Then Barbara can handle the application. That's, I think, a great solution. I'm happy with that.
So am I. Thank you.
So I just want to explain a little bit about the draft application that I did create. I took most of this from an application that came through the Community Foundation. They created an application for the town of Roxbury. That's where most of this came from. The only piece that I took from, I think I took it from Sharon. Was this very bottom piece where it says the recipients will be asked to file a brief report, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's all very streamlined and I'm thinking, I can take this and, you know, take off the NFP and put individual or business or whatever. Whatever categories we come up with where we're going to do buckets of money for this. And it should work very well and the way I envision it is our recommendation to the selectmen is going to be. We want, we recommend you put fifty thousand dollars aside for this, fifty for this, fifty for this, a hundred for this. Here's the applications. The selectmen should hopefully rubber stamp the whole thing, send it right off to the Board of Finance to rubber stamp the whole thing. And we could have it at a town meeting in May with the budget book to rubber stamp the whole thing.
So can we talk about the application form that you made?
Are we maybe getting ahead of ourselves by talking about the application?
Well, Greg wants to hear, but maybe you want a general.
What did he ask?
Well, yeah, I mean, you said.
It's in the drive.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I read yours and I saw the ones that the other towns were using. And actually, the Litchfield one, which is very specific about the information that needs to be provided. Actually, I thought was better. Because you, you need, you, you can't just say, hey, I have a need. You're gonna have to substantiate it. And a lot of businesses, unlike some Lori. At Lori's Nail Salon, didn't really get any help from the federal government, right? So she's in a different place than presumably more sophisticated companies that have been around longer, that have already gotten a lot of money. And so we wanna, we don't want to duplicate the funds that have already been given to businesses. Through the various federal programs. And so we would need, you know, the Litchfield application, which isn't much longer. It's just more specific about what you need to provide.
I felt it was a little onerous and I, I kind of feel like. We'd rather, I mean, I, I personally don't want to feel judgy at all. I feel like we just. There's a desire among our committee and among the community to move this money out to people who need it. And the simpler the application process can be, the better.
Yeah, I think that the simpler it is, the more fraud there is. It's real, you don't, you're gonna be giving it to. The simpler it is, you're asking for fraud by giving it too simple.
But only the, only the more together. Businesses and people are going to be able to comply with all of the requirements of Litchfield. It's a deterrent. To people who might really, really need it. And I, I feel like already those businesses and people were penalized because it is onerous to apply for government funding. I mean, you heard about the, you know, applying for the PPP and all of that.
It's so onerous to apply for federal funding that we gave billions of dollars to Nigeria and to felons in jail. I mean, it's not that onerous.
Maybe we did disagree.
It was too, it was too easy the first time around with federal government and now we, we should. Because you want, people like Lori, Lori's Nail Salon, who were not. Able to get those funds at this step, like we're several steps removed from. When those funds were distributed, we wanna, if we're gonna give it to businesses. It should be to people who weren't already helped.
Well, consider also. I want to make two points. One is. This money's begun going to people in our community. We know everybody in our community. Any fraud perpetrated, it's going to be pretty obvious to us pretty fast. Second of all, there is nowhere in the criteria that stipulates. That there's any threshold for how this economic damage is measured. To the point, if you are raking in a million dollars a month and COVID hits and all of a sudden you're only raking in a half a million dollars a month. You're economically damaged. There's no. Qualifier that says that you're over some threshold, so we can't arbitrarily apply those thresholds. At all.
If you look at our survey, the spread of people and businesses that lost, you know. That lost money. I mean, people were quantifying and while we did have forty respondents that said they lost ten thousand and up. There were nineteen who said that they lost under one thousand dollars. And do we really want an application process that makes people invest so much time? And, and, and on the other end, the review of the application process. If people are going to make a claim so that they can pay their back medical bills for a thousand or two thousand dollars. We want a pretty streamlined application that allows us to move the money.
And I think the Litchfield one was pretty streamlined in asking people. Give me your twenty nineteen business tax, if it's for a business, your twenty nineteen tax return, which they already have. Their twenty twenty tax return, which they already have. Their twenty twenty one tax return, which presumably they'll have real soon. And then give us a list of the funds you've already received. That's not asking an incredible amount of money. And it's, you know, it's taxpayers' money that we're just doling out willy nilly. It, it should be to people who actually have a need. And if not, it should be going not to businesses but to our community.
Well, I, I had a, I don't know if you want to call it a question or not, but. On the, now a fund will be set up for the nonprofits with a total amount to begin with. Is that what?
Well, that's the recommendation we've been discussing. It's not a fund. The money's already in the bank. It would just be allocated.
All right, so there will be, there'll be a beginning amount that will be. I'll call it, you know, a fund. To me, it's, it's like a fund that will be drawn out. Okay, so you're gonna have people that will apply to this. And then if the money runs out, likely it will. And then somebody is, doesn't get into the fund or doesn't get a request. How, and that person says, well, how come my, you know, what, what is the criteria that was set up? That, you know, that, that someone got chosen and someone did not get chosen. In other words, what is the criteria that is used to, to have somebody qualify for that? Because you're, you're gonna have people that, that will apply and then they're, they're shut out and they're gonna want to know.
Because there's only so much in the pot. The criteria is right here.
The erase grant, as you know, Joe, they gave that money away. So they went through it and for Litchfield, they have, they opened. It looks like they opened their process shortly before March second, although they made a revision to their materials, March second. But their window closes on March twenty fifth. So that is their application period. We could choose ours to be longer if we wanted. Litchfield said they are not going to do theirs first come, first served. We could choose to have ours be first comes, first serve or choose to do what Litchfield did. But whatever we do, it should be clear to the people in the community that we're expecting would apply for these funds. You know, how long they have in order to make an application and whether we're going to do it first come, first served. Or whether we're gonna wait until we have all of the applications and review them all together.
I see, so this would be set up more as a first, a total amount, first come, first served.
Only if we want it to.
With a closing date on it.
That's all part of what we're gonna recommend at some point.
So I think you. You want to have a closing date, get them all in because let's say we're allocating fifty thousand dollars to businesses. So if you're doing it first come, first served, like we got it in fastest and that's not necessarily putting it in the right place. And it sounds like you're saying that, like, as long as you check all the right boxes, you're gonna get money. And I don't.
Give it away, but that's the criteria.
Example.
How government stipulated. That's the.
So to give an example. And not to debate the merits of this example, but like there's. The guy who came in who mows the lawns for the town of Kent, for the cemetery lawns. And he gets, it's a huge contract for mowing cemetery lawns. And he's, his complaint was, well, his margins went down, so he's actually outsourced all of that. And he just makes a real small margin, but he actually doesn't do anything. And then now Kent should make up his margin, even though he's not even the guy mowing the cemeteries anymore. And it's just ridiculous. We should just hire the guy who's actually mowing the cemeteries and move on. Not, that's crazy.
That's not even what they've put forth. They've always.
The guy, so I read the guy's letter. It was absurd.
I think I, I would rather not.
I'm, I'm not debating that, but I'm saying not everything is the same. It's not all worthwhile.
I think if people were harmed, they were harmed and that is the purpose of this funding. And, you know, I, I, I mean, I think we all need to. Recognize that the purpose of this funding is to repair harms done by ARPA and not, I mean, by COVID. And we're, we're not under any obligation to. Evaluate whether certain harms are worse than other harms.
Well, Craig's question just, you know, now is that. The way this, this is just strictly, this application is just strictly for nonprofits?
It's a draft that I created that would be for nonprofits.
So businesses and. Individuals, they don't have to apply?
Of course they do. I would just, I created one draft so that we could discuss it. And then as we wordsmith it and fix it or whatever we want to do to it, I'd create another one for businesses and nonprofits and make it. Applicable to their focus.
And it's like this one?
It would be similar, yes.
I see. No, because I only had gotten this.
That's the only one I created.
I see.
And personally, I think nonprofits are like, might want to be the same as businesses as far as this application.
I think, I think nonprofits and small businesses should not be lumped together. I see them as very different entities. The, and the needs are in totally different categories. The Husatonic Youth Services, for example. The, what I learned about that organization and how much they do and. How valuable they are. I think a group like that deserves a recommendation on its own. We recommend Husatonic Valley Youth Services get X amount of money. And the smaller nonprofits maybe could be another sort of lump sum. But I think there are definitely some nonprofits that are strong enough. And the need is. Parent enough that we should make specific recommendations about them.
Yeah, I guess, I guess maybe that was what I was kind of getting at with the part about the focus group is that I think that. That to the extent that nonprofits are like small businesses and may have experienced the loss in revenue. Or, you know, closures or layoffs or, you know, expenses related to doing business like PPE. That. That, that's, you know, that's, you make an application and you say, you know, my. My annual income took a hit of five thousand dollars or so. But for, you know, Husatonic Youth Services Bureau. If somebody puts. Tor, if somebody puts forth an application to run a program or to expand their services in a way that serves the community. That's how nonprofits are different. You know, I'm not going to say that, you know. Some nonprofit, let's not use the Youth Services Bureau because I really do believe that, of course, that that's a very vital organization. But I'm not going to say that like this community nonprofit is more or less valuable than this community restaurant. You know, both of those entities deserve to be compensated for damages or harms. And then.
Not at the same time in the same lump sum of money. Treatment, but not, they all have to pull from some defined. Cash of money.
That's my question is.
Every individual that, and give them a check to cover what they didn't already get in excess. Unemployment benefits or whatever else they might have gotten from the government, find those specific individuals. But like the Kent Community Fund is in a position to help individuals that need help. And so we, you know, a lump sum into nonprofits that can identify specific individuals that have a specific need that hasn't already been.
If you go into the survey results. And that is, you know, I mean, most people in Kent did not experience a financial loss. Like eighty something percent or something like that, maybe even higher. But the ones that did, did. And those are people who said, I didn't get unemployment benefits. I didn't, you know, I wasn't able to make this up somewhere else. Or I got assistance from the community fund, but I'm still having trouble. And I actually went to, I mean, that, you know, realizing that our survey hit two hundred and sixty four people. Which is still a small sample of our community. If forty people or businesses lost ten thousand or more, if fifteen lost between five and ten. If sixteen lost between two and a half and five. If sixteen lost between one and two and a half and nineteen lost one thousand or under. If you add that all up. That is six hundred and eleven thousand dollars, so. We could expect potentially. At least that much if we put forth a general application. And it was eye opening for me to do that math because we're not talking about fifty thousand. We might not be talking about six hundred thousand, but we're not talking about fifty thousand. There is need in our community, even though it's a small subset of the community.
We're, we're not going to be able to re, repair everybody's need. So we can help some particular in need individuals. And I think the nonprofits are in a good position to help those particular. And I think the nonprofits are in a good position to help those particular individuals. But there's also infrastructure and other things that the money can be allocated. It would, it's only eight hundred thousand dollars and we allocate that across. So, you know, we've got a request then from sewer, which is specifically noted as one of the, the uses of ARPA funds. Um, we have our, you know, the town really wants to give money to the Kent Volunteer Fire Department. And that's gonna be a big chunk of it based on the results of the survey. And their apparent need. So like we, we're in no way can address everybody's need. And the federal government's done a huge. Job of pushing a lot of cash towards people. So the, the community needs have largely been addressed. And there're gonna be some individuals who were missed. And I think the nonprofits are in a good position to allocate money to particular individuals with a particular need.
I know, I, but I don't think we were discussing giving the nonprofits the money to give out. I think we were talking about giving it out, having Barbara do it.
Nonprofit, have Barbara give, give it to actual individuals?
Yeah.
That's, it's impossible.
Is it?
You're gonna ask Barbara to say, like, everyone will have. Everyone in the town of Kent send in an application about how they were, it's, that's a nightmare.
I don't think everyone will. I think maybe seventeen percent will or less.
So so then you're talking about taking the overwhelming majority of the funds to give to individuals. Rather than infrastructure or things that would help our community.
Because it was useful for me to recognize that we're not talking about fifty thousand dollars.
I, uh, Craig, I think the only, um, uh, situation where the individuals were would apply would be like for the premium pay. That was, um. You know, uh, that came up, that idea that came up, uh, uh, I, I guess the last meeting or the meeting before. Uh, you know, for essential workers will be getting, uh, a, um, premium pay. With a, a fund with that, i- i- is that how, you know, uh, what you're, what you're saying for individuals applying for relief?
I'm not, no. I think we're more broadly discussing how do you give it to individuals and then.
Uh, for paying bills?
It's like, I got fired because my business closed. So I experienced a loss.
But then I got twenty four hundred dollars a month in extra unemployment benefits. And my median net worth rose. That guy doesn't need more money out of the Kent ARPA funds. Maybe eight hundred thousand dollars would be great to have a long lasting positive impact on our community and not something that just evaporates. So like.
I just don't think of that as evaporating. I think of it as the main purpose.
I guess my, I, I think more of, uh, when you mentioned fraud, Craig, I just. I think more of people than that. I really don't. I think they're gonna be honest in what they need and and.
And not take it.
Right. For evaluating individual loss. In the final.
So Barbara, you wanna, uh, uh, so we wanna take, you get, uh, you're gonna get five hundred applications? And you're, you're gonna look at each individual and decide what they get?
Oh, uh, probably depending on how much money we allocate for the different things. My theory is that the grant, the allocations will also have. Some sort of a spread of criteria. So the grants to individuals would be between one and five thousand dollars. And the grants to businesses would be between five and ten thousand dollars per grant and that kind of thing. So I don't know how many applications I'd get, but yes, I have to report on all of this money back to the federal government. So I need to be able to have some information in my file to show how I. Evaluated what we did. And I, my goal is to make the evaluation very. Simplistic and in line with the final rule. And that's where I came up with this. Draft not for profit ARPA funding application. And the application for individuals would be the same. It's not my job to look at their tax returns. At least that's my, my feeling.
So some, alright, so let's say, uh, for, uh, it's one of the fastest growths of median net worth of, uh. Uh, in the country was during twenty twenty because of all the additional funds that were reported people, uh, you know, the trillions. And so like somebody who's median net worth rose, then you're just assuming they're not gonna apply for relief.
We're not gonna get people who feel like they're doing well or that they did well throughout COVID. I mean, that is why you get so many people saying they didn't have a financial impact on the survey. Because a lot of people didn't have a financial impact and they don't consider themselves to have been harmed in that way by COVID. And this, you know, the same way you, you see it in the survey responses. Number one, the number one. You know, uh, thing that the respondents wanted us to do with the funds. Is to assist residents with their bills. They know that some.
The number one thing that people wanna do from the survey is provide funds to the Kent Volunteer Fire Department.
That's the number one, if you looked at. What people chose as high, as strong support. But you know.
Look at the weighted average number. Since the weighted average, the lower the number, the higher the people voted for it. The Kent Volunteer Fire Department's number one.
Fire department or or assist residents by bills because either way you slice.
Assist residents is number two.
Community did want the fire department to be supported. So I'm really not gonna argue the, between those two things. That with, those were both things that scored.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just facts, right? So the fact is. The Kent Volunteer Fire Department's one point eight four and assist residents is two point oh one. So that's second. Or just, it's, it's not a, it's not a feeling, right? It's.
You're suggesting that we impose criteria on individuals that their harm has to be. In between some parameters and are you suggesting that we impose that same criteria upon the fire department?
Well, no, I'm saying that the town, the, the respondents on our survey, um. Their number one priority was to assist the Kent Volunteer Fire Department. And I think. You know, that's reasonable and infrastructure and improving our COVID response, improving. Our emergency services are all specifically things that we're allowed to do with the ARPA.
I have a question now, um, for, okay. Now, competition for these funds. Uh, how, and you say that, that there's no criteria that would be necessary. And you also said that there's going to be a big request coming in from, uh, either emergency management or the fire department. So therefore this, uh, it's gonna throw off. You know, the, um, the figuring that's, that's on here already. So if you have competition for those funds, how are you going to evaluate? You know, as to who should be getting what amount if there's no criteria.
Okay. Within our recommendation that we make to the board. Our recommendation should include dollar amounts. Along with each recommendation. So if we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that money be given to the fire department. We should decide how much. My personal is that this money should be spread as thin as it can be throughout the entire community. So that everybody gets something or a little something, or the people that were harmed get something. I'm not personally in favor of giving big percentages of this. Eight hundred thousand dollars to any one entity or any one group. So that's why I like the idea of allocating chunks of money to different types of groups. If we allocate a hundred thousand dollars to. Individuals and we put the criteria that the, the grants are between twenty five hundred dollars and five thousand dollars. That hundred thousand dollars is gonna go pretty fast.
I, I agree with you, Barbara. I'm, I'm right there with you. I, I. Would be fine if this, if our, if the ARPA funding allotted to the town of Kent went. You know, with, if the majority of it went to individuals, businesses and nonprofits. And benefited the community. And I, I do think that there is a way for ARPA funds potentially to benefit the fire department. As, you know, an entity operating in the town of Kent.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I would rather not see a huge chunk of the ARPA funding go to an infrastructure. Or, you know, a capital project until we know that people have been properly mended.
Right. Well, actually, what, what, um, a, a, a non biased, uh, way of determining that would be to go to the survey. And do a ranking for each of the things that the people selected as they, as they strongly want in, in favor of. Okay, and that would be an impartial way of doing it.
And the volunteer fire department then comes out as number one.
It comes out as number one in terms of the people who indicated that they were in strong support of it.
But I don't. On a weighted average, like, e- e- I mean, we could all decide, we could include or not include. Uh, one of the four categories to come up with a different ranking, right? The weighted average method that's there. I mean, you can't like, if I move the goalpost.
To the things. I mean, I, you know, when I, when I tried to. And I tried to be concise, like to go through the, the survey responses today and to make some notes for myself. Um, I was looking at the top four things because I really felt like, you know, it was not, um. There was not that much of a diff, you know, there were a lot of people that supported a lot of different things in the fire department. You know, there's no argument comes out on top. That doesn't mean that people answering the survey didn't also support other activities. And so I, I, I just don't think that it is. Helpful for us to pit. Different entities in our town against the others.
I don't know, but, but no one's suggesting that. All we're saying is, you know, we have to allocate the funds. And so we know small business, you know, so there'll be something for small businesses, but we want it to be fair. Uh, and, you know, go to the right people. Uh, we wanna allocate some to individuals. I disagree. I don't think. This town of Kent's the right person to allocate those dollars to individuals, I think. Ruth, you can speak up, but you know, the K community fund is very like specifically there to help people in their moment of need. I don't know why that they, you guys wouldn't do a better job than the town of Kent.
Because we're not dealing with people who were affected by COVID.
But you're, you're dealing with people with specific immediate needs and those people would have immediate needs.
But the money for this particular project is those who were specifically. Right, damaged by harmed by ARPA. Yes, we had, we had picked up some of that, but.
Didn't more people use the food bank though during that? That, that's what I've, I've read so many different places that more people were using the food bank.
Correct.
And so forth.
So they are harmed. These people have been harmed.
So.
Yeah, but they're also getting food. I mean, like, not that, I mean, they should be able to get all the food they need. That's fine. But they, there's some.
I, I, can we just, I, yeah. Forever, but I would like to get on to, um.
So, uh, hold on, let's go, so if, why, why can't we give fifty thousand dollars to the Kent Community Fund and then the Kent Community Fund, which is useful?
No, we don't want it. We, we have said, the, the board has said, we do not want, we have been generously, uh. Given loads of donations and we are not going to take government money to, um. Fund our community fund.
Well, didn't you had said, you had said at the last meeting, the, that the community fund doesn't need it?
I didn't say that. I said, we're not taking it. We're not asking for it. We, we, we can always use money, but we're not taking government money. We, we take private donations to, to fund that.
Right, and we're not talking about that anyway, right now. Because what we're talking about is the prospect of the Kent Community Fund receiving that set aside from the town. And then distributing that money, which maybe it would be efficient, but I don't see why it's any more efficient than having the town do it.
Well, I, I think.
So I like, I'm gonna throw something out there because these numbers have been floating around in my head. And then I would love to hear from Glenn. Glenn, what are you thinking through all of this? You're awfully quiet there. I'm thinking a hundred K to small businesses, a hundred and fifty K to nonprofits, fifty K to individuals. The rest, that's about a hundred and fifty. The first tranche, and I don't know how much the second tranche, maybe all of it, um, for volunteer fire department. And other, let's say, um, town improvement initiatives. I'm just throwing it out because I wanna get something.
I agree. We gotta start doing something this, at least putting out some figures. And we, we're gonna have several things and we're gonna make recommendations to the selectmen on the finance board. Let's get on with.
Well, Patricia, I, I, I was about to ask just that question. What percentage of this eight hundred thousand dollars is, do we think? Would go to individuals, would go to nonprofits, would go to businesses? Do we have any?
I think that's what we have to decide.
Can, can we do that right now? Because, because that would help me with all.
Yeah, that's what I tried to do by throwing out some numbers.
And so let's, let's, I mean.
Do that right now.
Cuz you, you need to, you need, everybody needs to start with the whole pie, right? So like. We, we can't decide, like, okay, all of us decide ten percent and then you get to the end and it's like, oh, well. Uh, individuals didn't get enough. So I like, maybe it would be better and particularly since it's five thirty seven. If everyone in the next week. Puts their percentage, here's our, here's how I think the percentage should be allocated. And then present at the next meeting why. Listen to each other respectfully and then, um, either at the end of that meeting or the following meeting, try to start narrowing it out.
I usually am the one cutting off the meeting, but I wonder if it doesn't make sense to do a preliminary round of that right now.
Again, I think you need to start with each person with a whole, not with individual slices.
Well, and I mean, Glenn was, uh, asking that, uh, you know, if we could do something now with the, um, with some of these figures. Adding on to what Patricia was.
I, it does. We don't even have, like, see, we'd have to, why don't we agree on what the categories are? And then have people come back with their full pie.
Actually, Craig, I, I, I looked at the, before the meeting, uh, earlier this week. I looked at the requests that were in there. I, and I divided them up into like three different groups. One, the group A being the nonprofits. And the total amount for those came out to be three hundred and ten, uh, thousand. Then the second, uh, group B was municipal. And for that, it came out to be a little bit more, four hundred and twenty six thousand, seven hundred and eighty three. And group C were businesses, premium pay and providers. And that came out to be a hundred thousand. So if you draw up on a pie chart, almost half, uh, it's almost equal between the non, the nonprofits. And municipal funding. And then, uh, in a lot, with a lower portion, businesses, premium pay and providers, according to the requests. I mean, I didn't, I didn't make this up. Those are the numbers.
Okay, so the, the categories to me seems like they would be infrastructure, individuals, small businesses, nonprofits. And that socialization is the thing that the kids need. So I don't know where that would, that's where would you?
So I would. You to the second page of the outline that I put together that has a bunch of things that we might describe as categories. And I don't know that they're the right categories, but those, you know, that, I mean, they, they, pretty much what you just listed are on that list.
Okay, so. Individuals and businesses. I don't know how, so, uh.
Let's put nonprofits in there because I was not considering those as being just distinct from businesses. But, um, but they are and we can do a different category.
Alright, so, so your list kinda has infrastructure twice. So we're just for the broad strokes of trying to narrow this down. Infrastructure is a single category. We'll call. Socialization and mental health a single category. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. But we're less, we're missing something.
I was thinking that there might be infrastructure that is specifically for future COVID related threats. I was thinking that there might be infrastructure that is specifically for future COVID related threats, like things like happening, you know, having.
I'm a hundred percent with you. Uh, I'm just thinking. Let's, if we can keep, let's say, five categories, we're gonna come back and we're gonna have percentages of where you think the money should go. And then, then we can break it down within those. So infrastructure. There's two places, two ways you can use it. The mental health, socialization is kind of two ways you can use it. So do you wanna, is five categories enough? I mean, we don't have too many categories or it gets too complicated. But for our broad strokes for next week, come back with, everyone makes a pie chart of how to. What that eight hundred thousand dollars looks like across five categories.
There right now and say that if we had the need in individuals, businesses and nonprofits, I would allocate the entirety of that eight hundred thousand. So.
Okay, well, that's, so that's, you're, you're gonna come back with. That's what your pie chart will be and you, and you can. Make, you know, convince the rest of us of that next week.
I, I think that we ought to not pinch on that because I feel like that is the most important part of what this funding is.
Feelings are fine. We also have a survey and other needs and it's, but. Yeah, I just.
What were you saying? Small businesses, nonprofits and individuals. Those are your three.
I'm just saying, I don't think that we would have, that we would get to the level of eight hundred thousand with those. If we just had those three. But I, I feel very strongly that we should be conservative in what we ask to be set aside for those application processes. Before we move to the other things that are both more expensive and are to me. This is my thing. To me, less, uh. Less of a priority in terms of what ARPA is meant to do.
But county, the, um, uh, according to the spreadsheet, the, the total funding requested is already eight hundred and fifty six thousand.
That spreadsheet does not represent applications for funding. That spreadsheet represents. What people have told us they would like for the ARPA money to do for them.
So would you put the fire department in an infrastructure?
And it is not, it is not, uh, Joe, doesn't, it's, it's not. Categories like we've been talking about.
The fire, Craig just asked, the fire department would be considered infrastructure. I wouldn't consider to, that's municipal, right?
No.
It depends what they're asking for. I mean. Ask for money for not making as much money on their fundraiser and they asked for money based on, you know, they needed. Want an exercise room and they may be putting together a request for something else entirely and those things may be different. Those are different categories.
But it has to qualify for pandemic recovery. Can't just, you know, be a wish list.
Just one aside and what qualifies or doesn't qualify. So the ARPA relief funds were specifically. Could not be used to pay public pension benefits and our state is using two point eight billion dollars to pay public pension benefits. So what they can actually use or cannot be used for is kind of a joke. And I would even point out in the Republican states, they sued to be able to allow. Uh, tax relief to their taxpayers with ARPA funds and they got an injunction and they're doing it. So I don't know that there are truly rules. But assuming that they are, um. Infrastructure is part of it. So I'd like, I, I would put in fire department more as infrastructure. Do you wanna create six categories? Since that's our overwhelming, most popular.
So a couple of things. Um, one is, um, I have come to this ARPA committee. With a commitment to not bring any sense of partisanship to our discussions, to anything. So I think it's best if we all can commit to complete utter. Political bipartisanship in our discussions regarding the ARPA funds. One. Two, I think the five categories should be small businesses, nonprofits, individuals. Municipal projects and or infrastructure and, um.
Can you do that again, please, Patricia?
Small businesses, nonprofits, individuals, municipal. Infrastructure.
Okay, so.
My five categories.
Alright, so fire department inside of municipal slash infrastructure, the way you're looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, um, Donna Hayes's little la, um. Notebooks for her PNC people as an infrastructure thing. I see it as a municipal thing. Um, I don't see, um, the. Joyce's request for hybrid meeting equipment for twenty four thousand as. Infrastructure, I see it as municipal. And last time they put that forward, meanwhile, it was a request for twelve thousand, not twenty four. So how it doubled, I'll never know. Um, so I see municipal and infrastructure as two different things. Infrastructure being like improvement of the parks or the water. System in the parks. The other thing I wanted to mention about some of these requests that. Um, Barbara has put in her spreadsheet is that some of the big nonprofits are making requests of many towns. So while they're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're not expecting Kent. To deliver all of that. They're requesting it of, um, several different towns and hoping each town will give a piece of it. So I think that it's not. Um, y- y- you know, if COG is acting for two hundred and something thousand dollars. Altogether with their three requests, it's not just of Kent, it's for, um, a group of communities. So. Um, that's, that's what I have to say.
COG didn't actually ask for any money to be given to them. They made recommendations and suggestions. That the communities utilize ARPA money for these purposes within their own communities. So when. Jocelyn Air spoke about affordable housing, what she intended to imply was that we. Support our own affordable housing here in Kent, the, our entities that already exist, not that we would give any. Or allocate any funding to COG.
Right. And we should not be limited in our thinking by what we've got on this spreadsheet because. There will be projects that haven't, you know, occurred to us because people haven't put forth those ideas. So. Who's to say that can affordable housing wouldn't put forward an application? Uh, once there was an application request for nonprofits. So I, I think that, um. I, you know, I think the spreadsheet is really good for being illustrative of what types of applications we might. Get. It's helpful, but we really should be cautious in not thinking about it as the universe of what we might or might not fund.
Patricia, I, I like these five, uh, categories. Uh, everyone else in the room here, what, are we missing a category?
Alright, so let's, can we, can we just run through it real quick? So, so it seems like it's municipal and we're gonna put the fire department in municipal. We've got infrastructure, which would be just like true infrastructure, like fixing the sewer, things like that. Individuals, small business and nonprofits. I would actually add something, socialization, since that seemed to be the big kid need. Uh, but maybe that goes through municipal, through the school, so. Five or six.
So where would, um, who's the town of Youth Service Bureau?
Profit. And that's where the fire department goes.
The fire department is not municipal.
No, they're their very own five oh one C three.
Alright, so then KCS would be in municipal and we have five categories. That's.
Right, but, but if the fire department is, is a nonprofit category, its request for.
Now that we're putting them in municipal. Go ahead, that's alright.
Regardless of what category they're in. If they requested for, to make up for lost income, they would be in those like top three things. If they're requesting something that's infrastructure, that is different. So I, I mean, I just don't know. You know, maybe, maybe you're right, Craig. Maybe we all ought to go away for a week and sleep on this. And think about the different categories in which we might wanna allocate funding because. If the fire department comes forth with an application for three hundred thousand dollars, that is more of a, uh, capital project. That is not the same by any means. That wouldn't be an application that we would entertain alongside other. Requests for lost income.
I think, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, but isn't the fire department getting a huge increase in the budget?
That's what they've asked.
Yeah, so.
So, but maybe we're helping fund part of that. Like, it's kind of.
Um, I, I, you know, so I, I think maybe what we ought to do is, um. Is, is do exactly as you suggest, Craig. Go away for a week, think about this discussion. I think it was really helpful. I have every belief that we are gonna be ahead of time with our report to the select board and so, um. So this feels really good.
I think we should also think about the, the, how much we wanna give to each group. Yeah, I would like, it's just some input. Which ones do you feel are strongest, which ones?
I mean, uh, it, it seems like if we break it down into the five categories, reach a consensus on. The five broader categories and you break down within each category. To a greater, you know, to greater detail, but to keep us from like running in circles, I think we have to agree. Now, like the fire department's gonna be a big one. So is it, uh, let's. I don't worry, but they're gonna spend it on, just call it municipal.
I don't think we have time to agree now. I, I'm sorry, Craig, but Barbara.
So, wait, if we don't, wait, wait, so if we don't agree now, then we're all gonna do allocations across five categories, then. Change the five categories next week and then we gotta kind of start over again. So I, I think you gotta agree. Now with the fire department is in one, two, three or five. It's not like.
Let's make the fire department because they're so unique, a category by themselves. Sure.
Alright, so we'll go to six.
Yes.
Fine, that's fine.
Okay, alright, great. So it is, thank you. I really appreciate it. I think we made good progress here. It is five fifty two and I am going to adjourn the meeting. And our next meeting will be next week, uh, on Wednesday at four thirty.
In person?
Uh, yeah, we'll do the same. We'll do the same. Great, thank you.